We do homeschool our kids. Our kids have came, became really attached to them, obviously, because we raised them since they were babies. We have nine, and two of them, we didn't realize when we had gotten them, because they were not sexed. So, once they grew older, they started crowing, and that's how we ended up realizing we had two roosters in the mix. So, we don't know what your guys has taken on it, but we basically have, where we have the coop right now, is the best place we decided to put it, because where we wanted to initially put it, it puddles with water when it rains a lot in like the springtime. So, it gets really soft, and it's not good for them. So, we decided to put it on the side where the cemetery was, because it was mostly away from our neighbors. So, we're trying to come here and basically ask that we be able to keep the coop where it is, because we did actually have to put, what is it called, construction mesh? Is that what it's called? Like, it's a, it's a hard, like, steel wire?
Hardware cloth.
Hardware cloth. So, we had to dig around the coop and the run, and like dig it down into the ground, just to keep them safe from any predators and stuff. So, it would be really difficult, honestly, to move it somewhere else. But, we would also like to be able to put up a privacy fence next year. That way, it kind of blocks that from the chickens being able to see anybody, and cut down on like the noise. But, the roosters kind of, that's why they're going off, is because they do see people like, you know, over in the cemetery visiting plots, and they kind of call out to the hens, like, hey, there's possible danger. So, if there's people standing over there, they're gonna crow, you know? But mostly, they don't. I'm home a lot, and I didn't hear them going off for more than 15 minutes at a time. So, I didn't understand why somebody had said that. But, if, we tried to get like these no crow collars too, to put around, we basically put it around the base of their neck, and it stops their air sacs from filling up too much, to where it kind of cuts down on how loud they can crow. I actually don't have it.
I enjoy the stories and the education, but we're not really, I'm gonna guide us towards what our board's tasked with, not researching chickens and the science on it, per se. We are a board that grants appeal reliefs to things you think in our town code, you don't agree with, and you'd like relief on them. So, you spoke about your research online. I suspect you didn't go to the building department to ask them, you just did it with your own?
Yeah, I didn't even think about it, because we knew people that had owned chickens in Chi-Lai. They had moved a few years ago, and I didn't have a way to get ahold of them. But, I just, like, I didn't think that there was an issue with owning.
So, there isn't, as long as you meet the five acre, this was one that came up a few years ago, is when this local law came in. And it's mainly due to the town as a whole coming up and having concerns over noise, smells, and other nuisance things that some people think are nuisance or not. But, our board's job is to look at the piece of property and grant the variance for that. So, the best way I can give that story to you is, we don't make it personal. This is all about the land and the variance that's being requested. So, for instance, if we grant a variance, it stays with that piece of property, that parcel forever. So, if we grant you chickens, I'll stick with chickens, that carries to the next owner, and the next owner, and the next owner, and the next owner. It stays with the property forever. So, there's a lot of gravity to what we're deciding at these board meetings. So, for instance, sheds, a lot of people don't think it's a big deal. But, if somebody, if our code says it's gotta be 10 feet off the side lot line, and somebody wants it five feet, we can grant that five foot. But, that new structure, if a new structure does come in, then any new structure can be five feet off that property line, instead of 10, which is what the code requires, for whatever reason that might have been of why that code went in. So, the same thing goes with these chickens. The restriction went in for the concern, I'll admit, it's roosters. The biggest thing in this town that people had an issue with was roosters, because people did start putting them on their property. And, I grew up in a different town, but I grew up with roosters around, but that was farm country. So, you're used to that. That's how people equate it here. That's why we have the five acre minimum. The five acre lends itself to the agricultural conservation zone, and bigger properties not in the suburban zones that are more tightly packed. So, I just wanted to explain that. Part of it is, we're looking at the land and the surrounding land. We do take into consideration the personal aspects of it, but we're more of an objective court, for lack of a better term. So, I just wanted to explain that.
Yeah, we've never had to do this before, so I know.
Yep, most people haven't. Most people haven't. So, side table, I'll go to you first. Anything you'd like to add? You can wait until later on, if you'd like, or you can add something now. I'm seeing silence on them. So, board questions? Jim?
I guess for Paul is, I guess, what's the origin of the complaint that brought this here? Was it neighbors and the crowing, or what was, there, obviously, there's an order to remedy, and something initiated that from somewhere in the town? Neighbors? More than one, or?
Just one.
Okay.
It's a complaint from the neighbor who brought it to our attention. Technically, it was somebody, they were having a service next door. So, that's what brought it on.
To clarify, they were having a service at the cemetery to the west?
That's correct.
Southwest. Okay. All right. Anything else, Jim?
No.
Fred?
I don't have a problem with where it's positioned. I actually prefer that than in the middle of the arc towards the residential area. I do have a problem with the roosters. I think that that's one of the main, I, we had allowed chickens before, but we've always stated, no roosters. I hear that you're trying to stop them from crowing, but, and especially with what is adjacent to you, a cemetery, and it's probably a family's worst time.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and to hear something that would, if they get excited by people and stuff like that, and to be interrupting a service like that, that would be, I can understand where that gets very troublesome for people.
We were honestly worried that it was going to, they were going to be a problem once we realized that they were boys.
Yeah, I know. And chickens are chickens.
It is.
Yeah, you know, I grew up on a turkey and poultry farm, so, you know, you can't, I understand that you can't tell when they're...
We attempted, yeah, to try and put the no crow collars on, to help diminish the noise, but, you know, like, it's, it's still, they're going to crow.
It's the nature of their creature, the beast, or whatever. The only other question I had is to council, and we were quick discussing this. It says for to house domesticated animals for the zoning, we, we can sit there and...
Yes, you can limit it to chickens.
Thank you. Makes it easier for me to try and spit it out.
Yeah, so, instead of that whole laundry list of them, we'll stick with your application, which is only chickens. Because, once again, now that you've been exposed to the code, to read the code, it lists cattle, horses, sheep, ducks, geese, pigs, and poultry, which is just a partial list. It doesn't necessarily limit it. So, that's where he's going at.
Yeah, we definitely don't plan on expanding to any other farm animals, or any more chickens. We just, we're gonna have the ones that we have, and...
So, I guess my next question would be, would you be open to finding a home for the roosters?
We, we have been talking about it, because we knew that that was going to be a huge possibility, was that you guys asked us to get rid of them. So, there is a couple of people that we know that we were thinking about asking. There was a lady that we had bought, actually, three of them from, and she lives out more towards Brockport, and she has other chickens. That's what she does. So, we were gonna ask her if she would take them back.
Thank you.
All set?
Yeah.
So, just to point out to everybody, there's no one else in the public, except for your group, but, that is the map. So, to describe it, there's your house. It's a schematic, but you've got your driveway, you've got your house. You do have 1.2 acres, and your coop is located over here, correct?
Yep.
And then, that's the cemetery, and then, that's the neighbors. So, once again, that's 1.2 acres. There's the coop with the shed and the run. It's in your packet, so. Phil, questions?
Can that shed be located anywhere else?
Well, when I brought it there, because I brought it there on a flatbed tow truck, and it probably didn't rain for a couple weeks, and I drove the tow truck back there, I started sinking, and I said, you know, this is probably as far back as I can go, just because the greater slope my property's on, the further, you know, you get back there, the wetter it gets. So, and I was already starting to, you know, seep into the ground a little bit over there, and I was like, you know, I don't wanna get the tow truck stuck or anything like that. So, that's as far back as, you know, I felt comfortable driving.
We have sandy soil. We have sandy soil. So, like, on top of it, when it does get wet for any reason, it's just, you just sink. Like, you can't mow the back for quite some time, like, until it's really dried up for three or four weeks after our spring rains that we get. So, we just, that's why we decided not to put it down there. And we really honestly didn't think about the poor people that were actually having services in the cemetery. I was just more worried, I guess, like, thinking, okay, well, my neighbors are all over here. So, that's why we had placed it where we did.
Yeah, my, my initial plan was to put it, you know, a little bit more towards the garage, but...
Back into the backyard, but we couldn't even get it back there, because we had to fill in ruts, like, he was, he was literally sinking.
So, so you feel you're limited to putting it there, nowhere else?
Yeah.
It'll be less intrusive, and, and, and less of a problem in terms of complaints and stuff like that. That's where that's to go.
I think that, like, so, you know, the noise complaint, like, with the roosters, they're, like, you know, if we do, like, if you guys want us to get rid of the roosters, we'll obviously, you know, find homes for them. And the hens are quiet. So, you know, and that's one of the other reasons why we said we wanted to put up like a privacy fence, so that way, it also blocks them from being able to see the chickens and them bothering, and, you know, the chickens are to themselves.
Yeah, I noticed that also, like, a lot of times, me and my daughter will go out, you know, sit with the chickens and everything, and I've noticed when people walk by and everything, the roosters, it, it's kinda, they're kinda just like dogs. You know, they, they see somebody.
They, they just like barking at them.
Yeah, they crow, and then, they come back. And it's weird, because every time they see me or not, or my daughter, or her, you know, they just, they just, you know, make little noises, and then, they're, you know, but, that's what I've...
We're familiar, so, you know. We've, we, you know, like, we figured if we did put up a privacy fence, that it would be better off for not only like the cemetery, but, you know, people coming by, even in the front. So, we were thinking about putting a privacy fence across the front, so that it blocks the front of the coop, and then down the side, oops, sorry, down the side.
But, once again, to go back to the story I was giving there, is we're approving whether or not you can house chickens here or not?
Yeah.
It's not the construction of your coop and the run. So, you may follow what you wanna do, but the next person coming in doesn't have to adhere to that.
Right.
They're just allowed to have chickens and roosters, and if we approved it.
Yeah.
So, I just wanna make sure that point is made, that you're doing things that can be perceived as the right things, but that's not what we're looking at here. Our code doesn't require certain enclosures, doesn't require the privacy fence. So, that's part of what we weigh into at this as well, because it's not just what's being said here.
Yeah.
If the variance, this is a question of the board, if the variance were permitted, can we also stipulate numbers?
That was gonna be one of my questions, the side table. We've done that in the past with other councils, and I was gonna ask that. Same with, right now, if, in this case, there, there's seven hens. If three hens pass away, then they're down to four. Can we get it so they're stuck with a certain number, instead of replacing it back to that number? So, we'd rather just, I think, so what we've done in the past is per acre. So, not to say we listed it per acre, but we evaluated how big the parcels were, to how many it, we felt that it could accommodate.
I, I think the short answer is, you can limit the number of chickens in the variance.
Yep.
I'm not sure I understand the point about seven chickens minus four plus two.
No, what we're getting at is, there was previous discussions of what happens if, we, we pick our number. In this case, there's seven existing, but usually, we don't have that instance. So, the conversation I've had in the past was, if we approved five, and they had five, and three passed away, they, they're allowed to go back and get two more chickens to always have five.
Correct.
Stipulating a maximum.
Right. Okay, any other questions?
No.
Side table?
You see that picture on the, behind the chairman there? Shows your garage, right? Rear of your garage. If you were to draw a line from the back of that garage over to the cemetery, how far off is there your chicken area?
I wanna say, probably, if it was right at the garage, it looks like maybe roughly about 100 feet.
Yeah, it would be close to 100 feet.
Because it was, it was 100 feet from the coop up to the, to the road, up to Chi-Lai Avenue. It was 104, 105 feet. I forgot the exact measurement, but I ended up measuring it out.
So, if I want, if we, if you were to, if you were to move that shed back to be parallel with the back of the garage, in a, in an east-west line, how, how many feet would you be pushing it back? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Probably at least like 50.
So, you were here, Paul?
Yeah, like 50. Yeah, well, if you put your, put your hand on the back of his garage.
Yep.
Now, come straight west.
From the fence.
West. That's kind of northwest, but that's okay. There you go. Straight west. I wanna know from that cur, where that cursor is, where's the back of your chicken coop?
In this area right there.
The back of the chicken coop is actually pretty aligned with the back of the garage.
There's the answer I'm looking for.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because that's to correlate, you don't have the garage depicted on this one, but what you're showing here is the shed coop is right here, and then, the run is here?
The, the coop, the back of the coop is actually, it aligns with like pretty much the back of the garage. So, it would be up more.
Okay, so it'd be right here. If I had drawn this line right here...
That's not, is that the back, or is that the, the gravel that we have sitting back there?
I can't tell.
I can't tell.
Yeah. So, we'll say it's right from here, so it goes to right there.
Yeah, I almost feel like that's the gravel that's back there.
Yeah, that might be it.
Yeah.
And then, it goes from there up to here, about 26 feet, correct? 14 and 12 is what your dimensions show there.
Yeah.
Is that what you were getting at, Paul?
Sort of a tertiary question. Does the, when I'm looking at the picture of the run, I guess this is it, the canvas, and is that comply with town code, that structure?
I don't have a code for chicken coops, Phil.
I mean, I'm talking about the, I'm not saying chicken coop, but does that structure comply? It's not, so the bill, I guess the bill itself is 12 by 18, so I'm assuming that was permitted, and that's all good. Or do we know that?
I don't have...
It's too small to require a permit.
It is?
Yeah.
It's got eight feet on the side, so...
A little overhang thing is, that's actually what they, usually handle those as kind of for moving a house.
Um, no, so like, the shed is actually where they sleep. That's the coop, where they, they'll go in later as the run.
But you have like a little dome thing.
That's their run, yes.
The tarp areas, the run.
So, that tarp isn't there anymore. It's actually got a clear, we, we were looking around, and we got a clear piece that we actually buttoned up to the structure. So, it looks cleaner now.
Yeah, that was, that was just temporary. I just wanted to keep them dry and everything. So, I figured that was the easiest way to put the tarp over top of it.
So, in terms of the lot parameters, you've gotta be 200 feet from that north property line and the west property line. You're 40 feet off the west, and I did bring up the Google Street View, so you can kind of see that there.
Yep.
So, that's what the board's discussion was. Your entire lot looks like it's 50 feet and 128 feet, because it's a irregular shape. So, you've only got 178 total width. So, it's actually not possible to be compliant. Is that an accurate statement, Paul?
Yes.
And then, likewise, your depth, you're at 384 feet and a quarter on one side, but it's not all yours, because that's only 239 feet. And then, on your west property line, it's 275 feet. When you take into account the front setback from Chi-Lai Ave to this, even pushing yours to the back of the property, you would still not be compliant with the 200 feet. Is that understood by everybody? So, in other words, it's not possible to meet it. That's why we're here. Then, we're trying to minimize our variance request as well. So, once again, 105 feet on one, 40 feet on the other. 105 is obviously a minimization compared to 40 feet. And that would just be a long hike from your house to get it, if it was further back, it was 40 feet and 40 feet. And, I just have to pose the question because...
If you wouldn't comply in an east-west direction, you could make it comply in north-south.
I'm not sure if you can even do a north-south with the neighboring property taking up 145 feet of it, and a house being in the way. The other thing I was gonna pose the question, because we have to ask, is if you were able to get five acres, then you'd be compliant. You don't have that ability to get five acres.
Nope.
Just putting that on the record.
Yeah.
So, once again, if everybody wanted to look, there is a coop there. That's where it's located. So, this is not an existing one. And, that says it's for sale. Is that boat still for sale?
Yeah.
Is that...
We had a couple, we had a couple people interested in it, so they just, because of course...
I'm not interested in it. No, that was...
Yeah, yeah. I was, I was gonna move it probably this weekend. So, not a problem.
It's in my way. I can't, I can barely see when I get out of the driveway.
That was what I was getting at, is I come down the street view, it's definitely an obstruction.
Well, I, yeah, I said something to him.
I understand you're trying to sell it in temporary. I don't know how long it was there.
It was probably up there for a couple months.
But, yeah, this is October 2023, but it's just a hazard on the right of ways when it's an obstruction.
Yeah.
Especially with an intersection over on this side. And it would really just be your neighbor and yourself coming onto that, but it's just something we'd wanna make sure.
Yeah.
And then, once again, that coop is located, now that I see that, that's, I'm guessing it's somewhere in that area. It's kind of under the trees.
Yeah, it's hidden by the tree, yep. A little bit further back, yeah.
Probably under this tree canopy?
Yeah, like in between, yep.
All right. So, I'll go ahead, unless there's any other board questions, I'll open up the public hearing. All right, open the public hearing?
Motion.
We have a motion. I was just gonna open it, but go ahead. Motion and second. Is there a second?
You really don't do it.
I was just opening it, but we went with a motion, so we're going with the whole.
See her moving, so.
It's, the public hearing's open, so I asked for a motion to close it. So, now, we've got Fred's motion to close it. Is there a second?
A second is.
We have a second. All those with favor saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, and you opposed. All right, so there was no public comment on that one. We wanna go back to limiting the number.
Yeah, I agree. I was trying to figure out what exactly, I think, seven, because they have seven hens now.
They have seven hens and two roosters right now, correct?
Yeah. I, I personally would like to see the, the roosters. I, we haven't let them have our variances, so...
I was gonna actually say, one condition is that roosters are prohibited.
Yeah. Any issues?
From the board on that? So, that one has come up several times. We have had people that have had roosters, due to, like you're saying, the noise that comes in, we just have prohibited that stance on it. Now, moving on to, if you wanted to put a condition to limit it, or leave it as their applica, well, we wanna limit it either way to seven hens, but do we wanna leave it at seven hens, or do you want it in a lower number? Do you want it at a bigger number?
Can we do it like the city of Rochester? They, they allow 30.
You can go farm on your front yard, too, but, but you can go live in the city if you wanna go do that.
No, thank you. No, thank you.
Yeah, I, I kinda think, because of, I'm trying to think back to a couple of the other ones that we've had, and I think it was, I wanna say, I thought it was seven. It might have been one with nine, but he had a bigger parcel?
Yeah, I didn't look them up to, to check on that.
Yeah, I'm going off of memory, and that's, I'm all...
You know, the ones that we have put a limit on have been on the fringes of agricultural property.
Yeah.
So...
Not in the R-1-12 zone along Chi-Lai Ave.
Correct us, Paul.
I believe you granted a variance on the Ireland property, which then, he wrote extension, and he had 1.17 acres. It was the one interesting property that had two houses on it, if you remember, that currently is, to the rear is agricultural property, but it is zone PRD, and it is scheduled to be houses. There is a subdivision.
Right, if, if it develops, right.
So, you're saying the property to the north isn't, isn't...
So you're saying the property to the north isn't considered agricultural?
Correct. That's all R-112, I think, or R-115.
On the Beaver Road extension.
Well, the Beaver Road extension is R-115.
Yep.
That Archer Road piece is R, either R-112 or R-115.
And then there was the one on...
Well, that was rezoned.
Because it was...
Beaver Road Extension was rezoned.
Because that was...
The Ireland house is on Archer Road, right where Beaver Road tees into it. It's that house right there.
And what do we restrict it to?
The number, he had a rather large coop. I remember that, because there was a third structure on there, two houses, and then there was almost like a third house they were using as the coop. But I don't think you got up over eight.
Okay, and I think the one on Hall Road, was it, was it another chicken one? Hall Road by the expressway there? And I think that was...
Oh, Mr. Gay, yes. He was just in...
A couple months ago.
1075 or 1157, one of the two. Yeah, crossing Fords, correct. He was in, you told him no roosters, and I don't think he had any...
He didn't have any roosters.
Either nine, so. And he had an acre, too. He also was in the park.
And there was ducks on Archer Road, too.
Mm-hmm.
I don't remember the ducks.
I remember the ducks.
There was ducks.
Okay. Here, we're talking about 1.2 acres.
So I, I think, in my opinion, seven seems appropriate.
Okay, seven hens. So a maximum of seven hens, you're saying?
Yeah. My opinion.
Okay.
You'll push back here.
I'm not saying anything.
I don't know, it's a lot, but that's my opinion.
So you want to limit it down lower, or just leave it and see where it heads? Or ask the applicant if you'd like to reduce it down from seven to a lower number.
We were hoping to keep our seven hens at least. That's what we were hoping out of all this, is that we could actually keep the coop in general and keep the hens.
Yeah. Well, the coop, we're not talking about tonight. You can keep the coop. It's about the chickens. We don't have a say on that, as we discussed, it doesn't require a permit, but this is speaking about the chickens. So that's just what I'm offering up, is if you want to reduce it down from seven to four, that's up to you, or you can move forward with the seven, and then it depends on what our decision is tonight. If, once again, if we vote no, you get none, and if we vote yes, right now it's seven hens and no roosters.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to keep, you know, the seven hens, you know.
We've all gotten close to them, and we've spent a lot of money to, you know, make sure that they were housed correctly and things like that, so then it would be quite a huge coop for four hens.
No, I understand, and I'm just pointing that out once again. Part of our decision is if you nice, good, good chicken caretakers leave, the next person may not be so good, and that, that decision, the town is stuck with. So I just wanted to offer that up, up to you if you wanted to reduce it down.
Now, you, you guys, like, you do the, the variance or whatnot, and then you guys can't pull it back?
So that was the next thing I was going to tell you.
Five, 10 years?
So, no. Unless, I believe it's after one year, if it's substantially different, you could come back and reapply again, but I'm not sure how you'd ever be significantly different from asking for seven hens one year and seven hens the next year.
Right.
So no, that, unless we go for a rehearing, I don't see any other way, correct, counsel? Is, they can't come back and reapply next year.
Well, I, I think what the applicant was asking is whether or not you could put a, a timetable on the variance.
I gotcha.
So you can make it, the variance could only for five years.
Yeah, no, it stays with the land forever.
Oh. I didn't, I didn't know if there was some way that you guys could take it back, you know?
No, no. That's the, the tricky part we have with it. I mean, this one's different because they're living animals.
Yeah.
Normally ours are fences and sheds and signs and area variances like that, but in terms of this, this is the code requirement, which, once again, the chickens could pass away, and it's 25 years from now. 25 years from now, if we approved it, those seven hens are still, so if we get giant Madagascar hens that come from Madagascar that are six feet tall, they're allowed to be there.
Wow, that's a good idea.
I don't know if those exist. I was just telling you, hypothetical for 25 years from now, when the dinosaurs come back. Go ahead.
Limited right to chickens, though?
We are limiting it to chickens, yes.
I just don't want to have ostriches.
Yeah, true, or alpacas, either one of those, yep. Yep.
How do you guys feel about donkeys?
There might be more complaints coming from the cemetery next door.
Yeah, there will be a lot more.
So once again, if you'd entertain that one for reducing it down, it sounds like one board member likes it to be a lower number.
Yeah, and obviously, there's two more board members here who could express their opinion.
That's what I, well, three, I count two. Any thoughts, gentlemen? Fred, I think is good with it. Phil?
I'd like to see no more than seven.
No more than seven, so you're good with seven?
And I would be hap, happy with the reduction also, but no more, definitely no more than seven, given the density of the area, population.
I'm a symmetric guy, so it's an odd number to me. All right, so we'll leave it at seven hens, and I will go ahead and do seeker now. So based on the information evidence at this hearing, find this application, be of type 2 action, and have no significant environmental impact. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So seeker's done, and that covers both, I guess I didn't talk about that much, but there are two, two variance requests here. One is to allow the chickens where none are allowed, and the other one is those setbacks that we were just discussing, the 40 feet and the 105 feet. I think we talked enough about the location of where it is, why it can't be pushed further to the southeast due to the sandy soils, the, the draining, the terrain, so we'll leave that one alone. So one condition of approval is that roosters are prohibited, so they're off, and condition number two is the maximum of seven hens, and I'll write chicken hens, because I don't know if hens are a different type of poultry. Have a motion to accept this application. We'll do application number 1A first, which is the allowance of chickens on less than five acres.
Aren't I kind of tied together, because...
They are. Do you want to just do them both?
You could vote on the chickens, but I don't think there's any way that they could ever...
Well, if you ever voted down no, we could never get to be right. Yeah, so we'll do them together.
I, I want that chicken coop dimensioned.
Okay. Well, we have it dimensioned. I'm not understanding. We're just granting a variance for it to be 40 feet from the west property and 105 feet from the north property line. Are you asking for it to be changed from that?
No, I just read that.
You want to know?
I didn't hear that language.
Gotcha. No, I just read it. We didn't revise those from the original agenda reading, so we're leaving them the way they are. I thought you were asking for us to mention the buildings, because the canopies changed and the runs have changed, but I wasn't going to have us do that type of thing. We're not worried about square footage.
They changed the coop to something that's over 190 square feet.
Then it goes to you for a building permit.
And you're coming back to the building.
Right, but as long as it is not closer than 40 feet to the west property line and not closer than 105 feet from the north property line, you don't have to be here. Just speaking if you move the chicken coop.
Yeah.
Don't put it closer to each of those, don't put it closer to Chilai Ave, and don't put it closer to the cemetery, in, in simpler terms. All right, so I think I'm still asking for a motion to approve both these applications with those two conditions of approval.
Motion.
The motion is our second.
Second.
Second. Board vote Jim?
No.
Mark?
Mark is...
Mark is absent, sorry. Fred, I'm reading off my sheet. I was waiting for him to answer.
Merry Christmas.
Phil?
No.
And I also vote no. So this was denied tonight. So no chickens. I'm sorry.
Now, is there a time period or anything like that that, you know, because it's not going to be, like, there you go, you know?
I leave that to code enforcement.
So continue to work with Paul on that one.
Yeah, I just asked what a reasonable timeframe is.
I wasn't going to put that on a condition of approval, but I guess we could discuss that tonight. What would it be a reasonable timeframe? I mean, usually these things don't exist before you come in here, so that you're at that awkward moment where you're asking for forgiveness for something you did prior to notification.
Think about it overnight. Give me a call.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Board minutes from the November meeting. Everybody get them in the email?
Mm-hmm.
Any questions, comments? Ask for motion to accept and adopt those minutes?
Motion.
The motion, is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those carried? I'll make a motion to adjourn tonight. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.